Good evening and welcome to the Green Bay City Council Candidate Forum sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Greater Green Bay. My name is Karen Schley and it has been my pleasure to coordinate this event. On behalf of the League, I would like to thank the candidates who are participating in this forum. All 11 candidates involved in the primary election were invited. Nine candidates have accepted our invitation to participate. They are District 2, Jim Hutchinson, Cassidy McGowan, Michael Shea, District 4, Bill Galvin, who is an incumbent, Douglas Yates, and Natalie Hoffman. District 6, Andrew Gerlach, Erin Oberth, and Paul Boucher. Candidates Andy Nicholson from District 2 and Stephen Campbell from District 6 had other obligations and are unable to attend the forum. The candidates are running in a primary to narrow the field to two candidates in each district. The COVID pandemic has made it necessary to hold forums virtually with no live audience. Going forward, in order to allow the voters to become educated about the candidates and the issues that they are voting on, it is necessary for us to hold forums in this manner. The primary election is Tuesday, February 15th. Because of the pandemic, absentee voting or vote by mail has become very popular. Absentee ballots were sent out Tuesday, January 25th, and early in-person voting starts tomorrow, Tuesday, February 1st. Because of the different devices that individuals are using to join us, some windows or squares may appear larger. Some candidates may appear larger or smaller on your screen. This does not mean that we favor any one candidate. Members of the audience may improve their viewing experience by selecting view active cameras at the top of their screen. Each candidate will be given two minutes to make an opening statement. Next, the questions will rotate between the candidates, with each candidate be giving a one-minute, 30-second opportunity to answer the questions given. In closing, each candidate will have two minutes for final remarks. There is no rebuttal. Questions have been gathered ahead of time and sorted by League members for duplication. Questions must be questions that all candidates can address. They must be appropriate and pertaining to the issues. Candidates can still submit questions during the forum. The email address is l w v g g v forums 20 at gmail dot com. This address will appear on the screen during the forum. It's right above the timekeeper. The Green Bay City Council Virtual Candidate Forum will appear on the League of Women Voters Facebook page and on their website. The League of Women Voters of the United States recommends that all League forums fall within the FCC's regulations and will only allow audio/video to be broadcast in its entirety, except by the media reporting on the event. Before we start, I would like to thank the many League candidates who helped to make this forum possible. With a special thank you to Steve Hero, a League member who stepped up to guide us in the technology needed. The League moderator this evening is Jean Marsh. Jean is a very active League member. She is on the League of Women Voters Board of Director. She is past president of the Green Bay School Board. Jean is currently the chairperson for the League of Women Voters Healthcare Committee. Please enjoy this forum and remember it is very important to vote.
Thank you, Karen, and welcome to our candidates for Green Bay City Council Districts 2, 4, and 6. And welcome to our virtual audience watching from the safety of your home. Thank you for taking time to attend this forum and become informed about this important election. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization encouraging the informed and active participation of citizens and government. It influences public policy through education and advocacy. The League never supports or opposes any political party or candidate. The timekeeper for this forum is League President Linda Bartlett. With this being a virtual forum, the candidate who begins selected a number closest to a predetermined number, and I will alternate each subsequent question between candidates. The forum will run for two hours. We will begin with the two-minute opening statement, and I will begin with Andrew Gerlach. Andrew?
Well, I've got it, I guess.
But I don't have it now.
Andrew, I'm sorry, we cannot hear you. I still cannot hear you.
Oh, I have you on mute. I'm sorry.
All right.
All right.
Okay, start from the beginning, please.
All right. My name is Andrew Gerlach. I am running for City Council because I want to be the voice for many different people in our community. I recognize that there's many different issues that not everyone is being heard, so I thought it would be a great opportunity for me to bridge the gap. My personal experience, I have about five years in financial planning, so fiscally responsible. I'm married, lived in the district since 2007. I lived in the same home, but my family was, or my home was owned by my grandpa since 1976, so we've always been part of District 6. And even when I moved away, I still managed to come back. Very active in the community and, yeah, I don't know, a minute. Really, my hot button issue is that I just want to be a voice for everyone in the community. I want to make sure that everyone's voice is heard and that I'm doing right by the district. That's about it. Senior unit, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Andrew. Natalie, would you please offer your two-minute opening statement?
Yes, thank you. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure. Okay, first, I want to thank you guys for inviting us here for this forum. I think it's really important that all of our voters can hear everything that all of us have to offer as candidates running for local elections. So yes, my name is Natalie Hoffman. I'm originally from the Milwaukee area, but I've been a member of this community for about six years now. I came up here to go to UW-Green Bay back in 2016, and I graduated in spring of 2020, and I've lived in this community ever since. Since being a member of Green Bay, I've lived in a few different areas of the city, and I've been a part of lots of smaller communities within the larger Green Bay. I've been a part of the college community. I'm a part of the local music community as a member of a local band, and now I am doing work with organizers and local politicians and local politics. So I've seen the way that people connect and care with each other in their own communities within communities in Green Bay, and that is something that really inspires me and I value very much as a part of this community. I really value the way that people take care of each other, and I want that to be something that I put forward as community care is one of my biggest values of why I want to run for office. I believe that everybody should have a voice in local government, and it is my duty as a potential representative of the local community to speak for everybody. And my three largest issues that I'm going to be focusing on are sustainability, infrastructure, and marijuana decriminalization. Sustainability, I think, is really important because climate change is something that affects us all, especially with issues like flooding in my district, right by the East River. Infrastructure, like things with roads and green energy and public transportation, those are things we need to invest in. And for marijuana decriminalization, I don't believe that anybody should be in prison for a nonviolent drug offense, especially when those things are related to poverty and trauma issues. So thank you so much again for having me speak, and thank you for being invested in local politics.
Thank you. Jim Hutchinson, if you'd please offer your two-minute opening statement?
Thank you. I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for putting on this forum. I think it's important. I'm Jim Hutchinson. I live on Livingston Street and I'm running for Alder in District 2, the city of Green Bay. My wife Deb and I moved to the east side of Green Bay 35 years ago. All of our three children attended Edison Middle School and Preble High School. I have a bachelor's degree in civil engineering from UW-Platteville, and I have a master's of civil and environmental engineering degree from UW-Madison. Early in my career, I worked as assistant city engineer for the city of West Bend, Wisconsin, where I designed roadways, sanitary sewers, and storm sewers. Last 24 years, I have worked on the Fox River PCB dredging projects. In 1998, I was the engineer of record of the very first PCB dredging project at Deposit End in Little Shute, Wisconsin. I am currently on the City of Green Bay Zoning and Planning Board of Appeals. I've been on the board for over three years, and I witnessed Alders coming in with their constituents for their support, and I was always amazed at the concern the elders had for their constituents in the neighborhoods that we were talking about. I'm running to support efforts in District 2 for safer, more resilient roads and appropriate land development. I also want to make sure the city of Green Bay uses the most up-to-date design standards for our infrastructure construction so we don't get caught short by the 25-year storm events that are happening every other year. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Cassidy McGowan, if you'd please offer your opening statement?
Good afternoon or evening. My name is Cassidy McGowan. I would just like to thank the League of Women Voters right now for hosting this forum. This is a wonderful opportunity to talk with everybody who's involved in local politics. I'd also like to congratulate Michael and Jim and Andy for running in District 2, in addition to myself. My name is Cassidy McGowan. Like I said, I live on the east side of Green Bay. I'm a graduate of Marquette University in 2006 with a political science, education, and history degree. I have recently received a master's in special education from the Catholic University of America and from Viterbo and Administration. I am the proud and happy father of three terrific children who attend St. Bernard's currently. I used to be employed at Luxembourg Castle High School, but now I am a teacher, coach, and learning resource specialist at Notre Dame Academy. My wife and I love to call Green Bay home, just like everybody else does. And the new U.S. News &amp; World Report has recently said that we are 21st out of the 25th most desirable places to live. Though I know that Green Bay is facing some challenges, but we need to continue to remember what has got us here. We're competitive. We're desirable. It's a wonderful place to call home. In addition to that, I feel like I can win this race, and I also feel like my service can make a difference in a beneficial way to all the folks, the workers, the retirees, and the families living in District 2. I'm just so excited to be part of this this evening and part of this race. Thank you.
Thank you. Erin Oberth, if you'd please offer your opening statement?
Hello, my name is Erin Oberth. I'm running as one of the primary candidates for District 6. First off, thank you for having me here. I'd just like to see if we have problems hearing.
You seem to be okay.
Okay, sorry. Thank you for having us candidates here. I like to see participation in democracy. My first taste was government with, was five years active duty in the Army, where I saw, you know, there are a lot of great men and women serving and a lot of inefficiency and waste, as well as disillusionment. And my primary focus will be to-
You can watch this, the squares here, but I can't take it away, and I was gonna watch it.
To bring in-
I can't get back.
As much resident participation in local government as possible. To that end, I am reaching out to the Hispanic community as much as possible. I don't think we actively seek their participation, even though they are a large part of this community. On top of that, my main issue areas are how we have all been affected by the COVID pandemic. Whether, you know, regardless of your opinion and the government response, we've all been impacted. So hopefully, we can go forward from there and come up with some solutions. That's all.
All right. Thank you. Michael Shea, if you'd please offer your opening statement?
Absolutely. Thank you for having me. Thank you, the League of Women Voters. My name is Michael Shea. I am a business owner on the east side of Green Bay. I've had a retail shop and entertainment center and training center for the last 10 years. What got me to run for office was a couple of personal experiences with local government. The first one was going to a city council meeting and needing to speak on a topic on behalf of my customers, and I brought my son, who was in high school at the time at Notre Dame. And when we left, he told me if I ever wanted to go back to a meeting to bring him because it was very entertaining. And that kind of stuck with me. I didn't know that our council meeting should have been entertaining. Some entertainment is good. And most recently, I was a part of the meeting on violence happening in Green Bay, which is a growing issue. And the elders that were running it were great. My alder was there but quiet, and some of the other elders weren't very impressive. So I felt if I was going to complain about the way somebody else did the job, I better be ready to step up and do the job myself. So what I'm looking at is a proactive approach to government. Right now, we're very, Green Bay is very reactive. The city government has some forms and things to fill out to get help. I'd like to see us become more proactive. I have a strong focus on public safety. It's the industry that I'm in. And of course, anybody who's driven around District 2 or most other districts knows the roads are not great, so we need to do something about that as well. So thank you again for having me. And like I said, my big things are I want to be a proactive instead of a reactive government and concentrate on public safety.
Thank you. Douglas Yates, if you'd please offer your opening statement?
Oh, thank you to the League of Women Voters and to all the candidates. I appreciate the time you give me and want to wish everybody good luck. Great seeing that everybody is running, people running. It really shows that we have a lot of people that care about our community and the public interest in these positions is great. I'm a father of four, married 14 years. I recently moved to Green Bay right around six years ago. I'm a journeyman boilermaker. I'm a journeyman U.A. pipe fitter. This is my first time running for any kind of public office, but I think that because of that, I get to offer a definite and unique view of how things should change. I think change is the right word because with so many candidates running, obviously, something isn't right in what we currently have. My biggest issue is roads. Our roads are terrible. Our roads need improvement. Not just our roads are flooding. Our city floods every year, three, four, five times a year in my district, and that can't happen anymore. I don't like the predictability of our board. Our board, you can take, and you can see how our boards are gonna vote before you ever even actually take the vote. And all you gotta do is look at the mayor, whatever the mayor is gonna signal the vote is gonna be. I want to offer a new and fresh perspective. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Boucher, are you available to offer your opening statement? Paul? Paul, are you there?
I noticed that Paul seemed to have disappeared about 10 minutes ago.
Okay, then, Steve, if you do see him come back on, I'll call on him. And we'll move to Bill Galvin. Bill, if you would offer your opening statement?
Thank you. And thanks to the League of Women Voters for hosting us. As the only incumbent here, I think all of you are gonna find out that this is probably the hardest job you'll ever work for. The first time I ran, I ran against four other people. I couldn't believe the amount of time and effort that was necessary to have a competitive campaign with the other four people I was running against. So congratulations to all of you for having the fortitude and the dedication to this community to go through with this. I'm 62 years old, married for 41 years, father of four children. I moved to Green Bay in 1968 as a child in grade school, grew up in District 4, have lived in the city ever since I moved here. When I was with the police department, I rose to the rank of captain. I was the district captain for roughly 25% of the city, meaning I ran, I was in charge of doing crime assessments and determining where best to use the police department's resources. I'm currently on the Board of Directors for Foundations Counseling and Wellness Center. It's an organization that works with mental health and also foster children. I'm also a current board member of Envision Green Bay, which is an organization that looks to advance the greater Green Bay area. Past board member of the Crime Prevention Foundation of Brown County and past board member for the Joan and Ray Kroc Center. During my time on the council, I found that everybody wants new roads, but nobody wants to pay for them. That's always the battle. But in the last two years, we've increased the amount of roads that are being resurfaced or restructured by 37%. And I think we're well on our way to continuing that again this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul, are you there? I don't hear from Paul, so I will start with our first question.
I think Paul needs to unmute.
Oh. Paul?
He was here about 20 seconds ago, so I think he's probably in the process of unmuting himself.
Okay. Paul, are you there? Rather than hold up our questions, I will circle back to Paul if he's able to get on and unmute himself. So I will start with our first question, and Natalie, I will address that to you first. And the question is, $23.7 million in American Rescue Funds is allocated to Green Bay to help with the pandemic and its disruptions. Do you agree with the mayor's plans for how the money should be spent? Do you have ideas for how the money should be spent to benefit the community?
Okay, thank you for that first question. Yeah, I was looking into that, and it looks like a lot of that money is gonna be going to help small businesses and the homelessness issue as well in Green Bay. I do believe that that is a smart way to spend that money. From a lot of the places that I've been to in Green Bay, especially at the start of the pandemic, over the course of the past two years, I have seen a lot of small businesses shutting down, not only here in Green Bay, but in the rest of the state and across the country as well. Small businesses have been hit incredibly hard during the pandemic, and I think it's very smart to be able to invest in those small businesses, especially because, at least with a lot of the people that I've talked to, I mean, even here with the people that are running, we have some small business owners. I think that's important to invest in to keep our communities' business diverse. And as far as, yeah, that's my answer. Thank you.
Right. Thank you. Jim Hutchinson, if you'd please respond?
Thank you. I think, and I agree with this money going to the small businesses. I'm a small business myself. I have an LLC, and I've been a consultant engineer for the last eight or nine years, and I had to use the money that was available during COVID to get through that period. I agree totally with the small businesses. That makes money because small businesses will generate money, especially if they can continue and operate. I also believe money should go to the health departments in the city. They've gone through terrific revolving door people because of the stress they've been under. And also, I think the school system has also been under a lot of pressure. I think money should be given to help with those indirect things with schools, to help them get back on their feet and try to get, hopefully, back to Dailies, you know, at-school school. So that's what I got.
Thank you. Cassidy McGowan, if you'd please take the question?
Thank you very much. Just so listeners out there can understand, the American Rescue Plan is a wide variety of federal funds that can be, that are the state and local governments to help with various programs. There are a number of limitations on how these funds can be used, but there's an opportunity here to be creative with these funds and spend those on roads and bridges and other things. I think we should use these funds on basic services, support our small businesses, and I don't think starting new programs right now that will increase property taxes or any taxes in the future to rise. Prudent. A lot of people are under a lot of stress and pressure, financial difficulty with the rising inflation. And I think using these-
Using the-
-fully fund and keep our schools open, like Jim mentioned, is paramount for our adolescent health, for the health of our community, and the health of our neighbors. I know families are looking for safety, but also I know mental health issues and some other learning issues, learning gaps starting to be created with schools staying virtual, shutting down. So that's my opinion on that. Thank you.
Erin Oberth, if you could please respond to the question?
I think the biggest way that we can support our community is to address how we are helping parents take care of their children. Of course, small business plays a big part in any community. However, in District 6, we're mostly residential. For that, I would say we need to find a way to bolster childcare so that parents can work on predictable schedules. Too often, I'm hearing that Green Bay is in the middle of worried about a COVID scare, an acute COVID scare, I should say, and they have sent students home for the day. That makes it nearly impossible to plan with jobs, and once jobs go away and funds start drying up, people start losing houses. We can't have that. We've got to do something to bolster that up, whether it be offer grants to in-home childcare, to small groups of people who know each other, or from there, I would just rather work with local community leaders and develop solutions as a group.
Okay, thank you. Michael Shea, if you'd please respond to the question?
Yes, thank you. There's three areas that we need to use this for, in my opinion. Small businesses, schools, and healthcare have been hit the hardest by COVID as far as things that we can impact with those finances. And they also happen to be three things that are prevalent in District 2. We have a lot of businesses, small and large, but a lot of small businesses with the industrial park in our area. We've got the hospital and plenty of clinics, and we have a couple of schools as well. We can get creative with those funds in the way that we use them, but I believe we should use them to focus on the areas that have-
No.
There.
Michael, you dropped off for a bit. We could see you but not hear you. Would you want to- Would you just want to repeat me the last sentence or so?
Yeah, my summary was that even though we can get creative with the way we spend the money, I think we need to focus it on areas that were hit hardest. And in my view, that would be schools, healthcare, and small businesses that were hit by COVID.
You. Douglas Yates, would you please respond to the question?
Thank you. I think I don't really have an issue with the way the mayor wants to spend the money. I don't think we should have taken the money in the first place. But we created a mountain out of a molehill. We took COVID to the extreme, and because of that, we shut down our small businesses and transferred- and transferred a lot of the business to big box stores. Now we as taxpayers have to get on board with either bailing them out or watching them go under, which isn't an option. We should never watch our small business go under. They're the backbone of our community. I don't really have an issue with the way the mayor wants to spend the money. I really do think we should focus on keeping our kids in school, so funding the schools. Our mental health care needs to be priority. And we can definitely use better infrastructure, so I'd like to see more money be spent on that. Thank you.
Paul, I see that you're on now and you're up for this question. If you could offer maybe some brief opening comments, and then the question I'll repeat again is, twenty-three point seven million in American Rescue Funds, money is allocated to Green Bay to help with the pandemic and its disruptions. Do you agree with the mayor's plan for how to spend the money? And do you have ideas as to how to spend the money to benefit the community? Would you like to just respond to the question and then offer just some opening comments as well?
Okay, I'll just quickly tell you who I am. I'm, I have a degree in sociology from the University of Wisconsin-Madison. I've been in Green Bay most of my whole life. I see the problems and it's frustrating not to be able to share my views. So I'm running to share my views and hopefully make a difference in the community. As far as the money, I don't know exactly what the mayor's plan is, but I'd like to see money spent towards finding relief from flooding by building a tunnel from Green Bay to Tijuani. It could also be a moneymaker, bringing money to many will help solve a lot of the problems that people are talking about. And I'd also like to bring diversity to the community by putting a Chinese-style arch among, dedicated to the Mong soldiers in Vietnam. And that'll help relieve a lot of the racial tensions we're having. But those are just a few of my ideas.
Thank you. Bill Galvin, if you'd respond to the question on the American Rescue Funds?
Sure, thank you. The mayor's proposal in a broad spectrum has been approved by the city council in that he has no currently specific ways of spending that money. I mean, there's a few things that are just starting out, but they're going through the committee process and then on to the council for approval. But I agree with in the broad framework that he has set up as to how that money should be spent. I should mention that the school districts in Brown County all have their own separate funds, ARPA funds. The city would not be allowed to put any of those monies towards any of the schools or even towards mental health. That would be Brown County, which has the Human and Social Services Organization. But as to small businesses, infrastructure, we are limited by federal law on how those monies are spent, but the city is currently looking. In fact, we're just getting some of the, we finally, I think we got the last of the rules and restrictions on how to spend it. So we're currently working on programs to improve the infrastructure, but not in a way that's going to cost the taxpayers down the road. For example, you're not going to pay for something that's going to need or start something that's going to need continual upkeep, which is then going to be put on the local taxpayers' backs years down the road. You want to take one-and-done type projects, and so that's what we're working forwards.
Thank you. Andrew Gerlach, if you would please respond to the question?
Yes, so I do agree with a lot of
Andrew, do you have a second device? You may need to turn a second device off so you don't get feedback or turn its volume completely down? Now we can't hear you.
We can't hear you.
All right, sorry about that. That should be better.
Yes.
All right, I'm actually sitting in the office with Aaron, so we're both on at the same time. So we're gonna, one's gonna go in and out, so I apologize. But I do agree with how some of the plans are to spend the money. I think infrastructure is a very important thing. I also agree with, you know, spending some of that money on schools, although now I understand that we probably are not allowed to spend that money on schools. Same thing with spending it on healthcare, healthcare reform and helping people who are struggling through a different, different addictions in the area because I think that that's part of why we're seeing uptick in crime and different things like that. I don't think we have the infrastructure in place to actually support addiction properly. So I don't know if we can use that money for that or not yet, but I think that would be another good area to spend that money in.
Thank you. Our second question, we will start with Jim Hutchinson. And the question is, the city of Green Bay is considering rebranding for the first time in more than fifteen years. This project was cost in the neighborhood of a hundred thousand dollars. If you are on the city council, how would you vote and why? Jim?
Oh, rebranding, okay. Marketing, so it's kind of a big deal, I guess. It's a good time to do that, I think, in my view, because I look at Green Bay as kind of a jewel in the rough with the Fox River now, as clean as it's been in decades after the PCB dredging and capping that's occurred. With the young artists that are involved in the city, with other things that are happening. I know there's some young business and, you know, older people with businesses who really want to see a change and it's kind of exciting. So I would vote for a new emblem. Of course, there's going to have to be a Packer portion of it somehow, because we love the Packers. The income and whatnot from that is amazing. So, but there's a lot more to Green Bay than just the Packers. And I think we have to look at what, how we want to portray Green Bay in the next fifty years and work for it. There's a lot of good things we can go for, and I think activity on the water is going to be big, just between you and me. I guess that's it. Thank you.
Cassidy McGowan, if you could please take the question?
Yeah, thank you for asking this question. I think the rebranding effort might not be worth it if it's not going to be done right. I do know, as we all do here, that we need to, Green Bay needs to stay competitive and desirable. But I think we need to spend on the necessities. Our police, our fire, and our infrastructure. And our area speaks for itself, the attraction of the Packers, our restaurants, our museums. In District Two, Baird's Creek, it's an underutilized resource. It's a wonderful area. I was out there this morning on a little trail run, but I would be open to some ideas, but I think a hundred thousand dollars. I think that, I think that's, might not be the most prudent use of that, that money. But I have an open mind and I know, like everybody here does, that Green Bay is an amazing place to raise a family, retire, and work. And so maybe we need an effort to reach and attract workers and retirees and families to the area. So I wouldn't be opposed, but I still, like I said earlier, I think we need to prioritize our spending on necessities like police, fire, and infrastructure.
Okay, thank you. Aaron Obruck, if you could please respond to the question?
Yes, so after I got to the Army in two thousand and fourteen, so when I moved up here, we really went into college and a lot of what I heard was, Green Bay has a brain drain problem. I haven't seen many steps to connect that, to correct that. So addressing some of the underlying issues of why people leave Green Bay, rebranding seems kind of moot. That being said, the hundred thousand could be spent correcting some of those conceptions. But as it stands, just, I don't, I feel like rebranding is just throwing a hundred thousand dollars at a problem without analyzing the root cause of failure.
Michael Shea, if you would please respond to the question?
Yes, the first part of the question was if I was on the council now, how would I vote for that? And that is absolutely no. I would not vote for the rebranding. The hundred thousand dollar number came because that was what the city was given after the budget was done. That is the completely backwards way to run a project. When you're doing a project, you need to look at what you need to get out of it, what it's going to cost, and then set your budget accordingly. As a small business owner, I understand the importance of branding. I've also watched other cities, states do branding at trade shows and such that I go to. I do not believe that that hundred thousand dollar number is enough. I don't think that'll get the project done. I think it's just a number that was attached after we got the money, not looking at rebranding Green Bay and saying, what is it going to cost us to do this right? If that's something that we want to do down the road, it's something that has to be done right. There are much better places to spend that hundred thousand dollars than trying to fit that square peg into a round hole to make somebody feel better.
Okay, thank you. Douglas Yates, if you'd please respond to the question?
Would I vote for it? No, not at all. Why wouldn't I vote for it? I don't think it solves any problems that we have. Rebranding is essentially giving up on what you are and coming something different. We don't need to become anything different. We draw a lot of people in for what we are. I think if we're going to rebrand, we should keep the Packers completely out of it. Football isn't the only thing in Green Bay. We need to focus on what is in Green Bay. And they're not. Would, would I vote for in the future? Well, kind of like what the last guy said, yeah, if it's done right. I've been through several rebrandings with companies I work for. They work well if you market them right. A hundred thousand dollars for a problem that you can't fix? No, I wouldn't do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Boucher, would you please respond to the question?
Yeah, if we're going to rebrand, we need to have something to sell, something to advertise. And we should invest in things that we can, we can advertise as being different. Most of the things like the Packers, everybody knows about the Packers, so we don't really need to tell more people about the Packers. We need to invest in things, like in New York, they built a tunnel underneath the river to get into New York City. We built a tunnel in Green Bay, people would travel for hundreds of miles. If you built, like I said, the Chinese-style arch would drop people in. You have to invest in things that, that people, that tourists want to go see. So if we don't have anything to advertise, it's difficult to advertise. So I think we should invest in something that would attract people to Green Bay.
Thank you. Bill Galvin, would you please respond to the question?
Yes, thank you. First off, there's a difference between logo and rebranding. Logo is part of the rebranding. And the hundred thousand dollars was just an estimate. The council has asked this item to be sent back to staff to rework it, get more information, and then re-present it to the council for a decision to be made. I read some articles, including some from the Harvard Business School on branding. Again, like some others have said before, branding's done right, it can be very successful and it can benefit the company that is rebranding. We're all aware of commercials and advertisements we've seen from the state of Michigan about going to Michigan to live the vacation. We see that when we drive into towns, they have signs in the front. I think rebranding and promoting Green Bay is the difference between having the, the open sign on in your window of your store as opposed to having it off and just putting down the drapes and waiting to see who might wander by and come in. Green Bay has a lot of great things going for it. We have to make sure that we are telling everybody outside statewide and throughout the nation, what we have going for so we can get people to come here. People will come here and live to grow, to raise their families, to start their businesses or expand it. I'm not sold yet one way or the other. I'm waiting to see what the final decision is. But I would also remind everybody out of a hundred and twenty million dollar yearly budget, a hundred thousand dollars is less than one-tenth of one percent of that budget. It won't even get you an entire block covered with asphalt.
Jim, come down here.
I'm sorry, Bill, did you need to make it, make any more remarks? I think we had another voice in there.
Where did I die?
Maybe just restate your last sentence.
Sure, you know, a hundred thousand dollars is less than one-tenth of one percent of our entire budget. A hundred thousand dollars won't even get you a full block of street resurfacing done with asphalt. So I mean, we have to put it in perspective when we're thinking about what can be done with this kind of money. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew Gerlach, if you could please respond to the question?
Yes, if I had to vote on the rebranding today, I would probably vote no. I just don't see a hundred grand being enough to do it right. Like a lot of the other candidates have said, I think that rebranding properly could, could really do a lot for our city, but I think it needs to be done right. And I just don't know if a hundred grand is going to be enough to do that. As far as bringing people in, I think the Packers are probably the biggest drop to the city and they do bring a lot of people in, but we do have a lot of other natural resources like, you know, the Fox River, the Bay, Bay Beach, different areas like that that also contribute to some people coming into our, our community. And I think most people know about them, but I think we could do a better job with the branding if we were to promote other things outside of that arena. Yeah, so if you had to vote for today, I would say no, but I would be interested in learning more.
Thank you. Natalie Huffman, if you could please respond to the question?
Yeah, thank you. I will probably echo a lot of other candidates' same thoughts. But so if I had to vote on this today, I would also vote no. I do think that there is a value to being able to rebrand to show how a city has grown over the past twenty years. Not to say that change like could be a bad thing. I mean, like a lot of people have said, you know, the Packers are definitely like the biggest thing that draws people to this community, but we also have so much more. Green Bay has so much more to offer folks than just the Packers. We do, we have the nature areas, we have the river, we have all of like the beautiful like land around the bay. We have some nature areas outside. Then there's also downtown, which is such a vibrant community, and there's so many community events that go on in summer. And also the local music community in Green Bay, that's something that I will always be an advocate for because it's just amazing. There's so many more draws to Green Bay outside of the Packers that I think we could highlight. And I think by spending more time focusing on like how we would rebrand and focusing on the development before we rebrand is something that's important to make sure that we have the time to grow as a community and be able to do a rebranding right. So yes, thank you.
Thank you. Our third question, we will start with Cassidy McGowan. And the third question is, homelessness is an increasing concern in the city. How can the city council help prevent homelessness and support the homeless in Green Bay? Cassidy?
Thank you very much. Yes, homelessness continues to be an issue in Green Bay. Just the other day when I was driving down to Fox River Trail and I went by St. John's, there are still people unfortunately who are at the fringes of society and have, are now find themselves homeless. I think the city can help provide mental health services. We need to fully fund those, look at some ways to make sure that our homeless population feels cared for and their basic needs are met. I think they need addiction help. And I think COVID in the last twenty-two months is an issue with homelessness. And unfortunately, a lot of people have turned during despair to addiction, addiction and substances. We need to provide job training. I think the city can provide job training. There's multiple jobs to be had. Unemployment is at three point nine percent. Employees are looking for workers to fill our factories, even sophisticated knowledge-based economy. So I would just like to see the city provide mental health support, affordable housing, addiction treatment, and our, the basic needs of our homeless population.
Thank you. Aaron Obruck, if you'd please take the question?
Just read an article the other day that there are a lot of great organizations having a lot of success helping tackle homelessness here in the Green Bay area. Now, one of the frustrations they mentioned is dealing with various parts of government that are shut down due to COVID. There's nothing we can do about that. But ultimately, it's been proven time and time again that the housing-first model is the most effective model to combat homelessness. And I think Green Bay needs to do what it can, either it be through grants towards these organizations that are handling it.
Uh. Perhaps building siting, uh, incorporating mixed youth zoning. Really, it's something that needs to be looked at. But we just need to build on what these organizations are already succeeding on and give them the capability they need to tackle the larger issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Shay, if you'd please take the question?
Absolutely. Um. There are a lot of great organizations in Green Bay. My family works with N E W Shelter. My Kiwanis group works with them and Paul's Pantry and Golden House. Homelessness isn't a simple one-issue problem. There's mental health, there's training, there's jobs, there's housing. We need to see where the city can put resources and energy to help the organizations that are already doing these things. What can the city do to make permitting easier? To make, to give a little extra tax breaks to some of these charity organizations or whatever they need. It needs to be a discussion between the city and the people providing those services on the frontline. And as was stated, the city doesn't really have a mental health system that we can do. The county takes care of that. So the city's going to have to focus on other things. Are there organizations in our community that are handling mental health? That the city could help that, those organizations. I think there's a lot that can be done that isn't being done. And I think it's all going to focus on the people on the ground that are already working the problems and getting them the tools and resources they need to continue working those problems and get better at it and help solve our problems. Thank you.
Douglas Yates, if you could please take the question?
Thank you. There is not a minute thirty answer that you're going to get to solve homelessness here in Green Bay. It just, it's a complicated issue that you just can't solve. Um, how do you solve for a person that wants to be homeless? You can't. How do you, how do you solve for a stigma that is drug addiction? Can't. You can offer help, you can offer resources, and you can offer things that they just may not want. Um, given the people that are on the front lines doing work, is it going to be the best way you can do it? There is no city answer. We have things in place that help now. And they don't seem to be working at all. Alls we can offer is a place for them to go in the winter. And that may not be the best answer. And it's not going to be the best answer, but there isn't much more than what we can do now. Not with the resources that we have. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Paul Boucher, if you'd please take the question?
Okay, um. Uh, it's, each person who's homeless has an individual story, so each of their stories has to be heard in order to solve their problem. Some people, it's just short-term, they're just in-between housing, they don't have a place to live, they don't have the minimum income that they need at the time. There's other people who are more long-term. You could relocate them, but moving to like Madison and Milwaukee is not going to help. It just makes the problem worse. Some have very um, good skills, they, they under, can you hear me? They understand English, they um, those assets are very valuable, just not in Green Bay. So the idea of relocating them to Asia or Australia or Africa, it seems like a radical idea, but giving them a fresh start would be very helpful for most of them. And the statute of liberty says, uh, give us your, your tired, poor, you're downtrodden. Sometimes when you go to a new environment, you become a new person and you get a fresh start and you really have a new life. The, the lifespan of somebody who's homeless um, isn't very long. I wouldn't live on the streets very well. I don't know about you, but um, I care about them, but um, the, the, the answer is complex.
Thank you. Uh, Bill Galvin, if you'd please respond to the question?
Sure, thank you. Uh, like I said before, um, the the, the, the city is working with homelessness. Uh, the police department is dedicated to it. The Green Bay Parks Department has been doing a lot of work with the homeless because a lot of them are hanging out in some of the parks uh, in the near downtown area. Um, there's a Greater Green Bay Community Foundation, which just uh, finished a, a study into and a, and a plan to work on homelessness. Uh, there's NGOs out there. Uh, foundations of which I said before I'm on the board of directors for. Uh, works with some of the chronic resistant homeless and those are some of the individuals you'll see at St. John's. They have mental health issues, they have drug uh, issues. Um, and they find it very hard to work within the system. And so the city police uh, counselors um, work with these individuals, try and help them out. But there's so many other different levels and types of homelessness. Uh, eight hundred children in, in the Green Bay School District are homeless amongst uh, all the other school districts in our area. And there's a lot of people that are homeless that, that fall on the hard times. So part of our ARPA funds are going to be going towards uh, building uh, affordable housing, which we hope will have some impact. We did approve and there was a, a homeless uh, center built for veterans right by the Veterans Center out on the far east side of Green Bay. So things are being done, but it's, it's like it's been said, it's long, it's a slow process. And I, I think we need more help on the mental health aspect of that and uh, getting uh, more government agencies to work with these NGOs together. Thank you.
Andrew Gerlach, if you'd please respond to the question?
I agree. I think we have to um, kind of address the underlying issue for what the cause of the homeless is. And each person is a little bit different and unique and you do have some people out there that are not willing to put in the effort to get themselves out of that situation, whether it's addiction or they don't have the skills or whatever. I think uh, a lot of our shelters do, do a good job of trying to help educate them and help take them from one step to the next. Um, but I think a lot of the other shelters in the area may not do as well the job of that. Um. And if you're just allowing them to use, use and continue to go down the same path, I don't think that that's going to correct the issue. So to correct the issue, I think we have to address the underlying issue, which would be more of the mental health aspect and the um, utilization of drugs and alcohol and different things that are going.
Yeah. Natalie Huffman, if you could please respond?
Thank you. Yeah, like a lot of folks have said here already, uh, homelessness is such a complex issue that like, you know, cannot be answered in just one single conversation. And it's something that there's a lot of different causes to, especially because every individual is like, you know, dealing with homelessness for a different reason. Um, like, you know, I think a lot of things, uh, like a few of the big problems that I think would need to be addressed for sure would be like things like affordable housing and mental health care, like resources and access and um, especially with uh, people dealing with addiction, like, you know, addiction and poverty go hand in hand for sure. Um, I just think that one of the big things that we also need to think about is just the demon, the demonization of homeless people. Like, these are all members of our community that are disenfranchised. So, but I think it is really important to be able to think about how we can better invest in these people to help them, to raise them out of homelessness. So like with the things that I was mentioning earlier, by investing into those people with like, you know, affordable housing, um, job training with mental health resources. There's a lot of things that go together that people need to be able to raise themselves out of homeless. Again, it's a really complex issue. And there's a lot of things that go into it. And, and one really big thing as well that I think would be useful is just community support. Again, these people are members of our community. And a lot of people are lacking in a strong support system, especially with people that are recovering from addiction. Um, it's really important for people to be able to have um, community support behind them as well. So I think that's one thing that money can't really solve. But um, you know, we can put money towards as many resources as we can, but being able to support them as well is very important too. Thank you.
Jim Hutchinson, if you could please respond?
Uh, thank you. Um, there's a lot of different um, ideas flowing out there as we can see, and that's the size of the issue that we're talking about. Um, I think this is a regional issue. Um, we don't want to actually set up, I don't think, specific locations where people go to or dropped off from other counties or whatever. I think the city has to work with the county of Brown County and the surrounding counties. It should be a united effort. The city of Green Bay has structures. It has systems in place like the police department. Uh, it has charities involved. Um. This should be a coordinated effort to address this issue as we see it's a big one as a region, so it can be spread across the area. Because the, these people do need support, um, as been stated. And I think if we do um, bring the uh, the facilities and the abilities we have, we can address this more by bringing our uh, um, systems together in a coordinated fashion. Thank you.
Thank you. Our fourth question, and we'll start with um, Aaron Obruck. Um, and the fourth question is violent crime has been increasing in Green Bay. In what specific ways would you support the efforts of the Green Bay Police Department to address this issue? Aaron?
Um. From what I understand, a lot of this uptake in violent crime has to do with uh, high school and just above age children. Acting out, uh, and not necessarily acting out, but um, feeling like they have no other options or getting involved in minor squabbles and making them go far beyond what they should be. To that end, I think we should adopt to a certain extent and support the idea of increasing community policing within the schools. Um, as well as finding ways to get uh, non-governmental organizations, excuse me, in there. As a proactive measure before the police have to get involved. And that's where things, I know, get a little complex, working with different levels of government. I think that avenue of cooperation between the levels of government could really benefit that particular issue. Thank you.
Michael Shay, if you'd please respond?
Yeah, I mean, anytime that we hear about, you know, violence in our community, it's uh, it's unacceptable. It's scary. It it's not good, obviously. Um, I don't agree that this is simply kids acting out or high school, slightly older high school kids. We're talking about shots fired multiple times. We're talking about uh, violence. And we need to look at what is the stem of the violence. Um, I think that the uh, police department is going in the correct direction. Uh, I don't know all of the details of the company they hired to look at the stem of the violence, but I think that focusing on what the stem problems are is the right direction. I don't know that we can come up with a solution until we have the problem defined. I think that we can continue to react to it the way that we have been. And again, I'm all about proactivity instead of reactivity, so the study to find the root of the problem is going to lead to a proactive solution. And that's what we really need is a proactive solution. Uh, continuing to be reactive to it is not working. It's getting worse. So we need to make a change and uh, I support the police in their efforts to make that change. Uh, from everything that I've seen from them and I've worked with uh, policing agencies in the area. I think they're moving in the right direction and the city needs to support that.
You, um, Douglas Yates, if you'd please respond?
Thank you. Uh. Almost every answer to every question has been how the government can get involved. I don't think necessarily getting a government involved in everything is the right answer. I think we need to work hand in hand with the citizens and the government to come up with the right answer. Everything we've done so far hasn't worked. Maybe we need to start exploring alternative options. Well, you can trace violence all the way back to the root of the home. That doesn't mean you can solve the problem. Uh, the uptick in violence in Green Bay should necessi- necessitate people being more active and more aware of their surroundings, but we don't teach that. We don't teach safety protocols to our, our community. We need to seriously consider being an active member of the community, having a concealed carry permit. Making sure you can stop yourself from being a victim. As well as also, we need to have a better crime reporting system. I see that the city council approved for this thing that can determine where the shots come from. I don't think necessarily involving the police and more community interactions is going to solve anything.
Okay, thank you. Um, Paul Boucher, if you'd please respond to the question?
Okay, the police, the police are involved in uh, they're in charge of negative reinforcement, getting people to obey laws because they have guns and they can charge you, they can fine you, they can tase you. All the tools we give them are negative reinforcement. We should have people obeying the laws because they want to obey the laws. They, they agree with the community. You know, they, there's, there's jobs, um, opportunities, uh, fun things to do and they're not, they're not being locked out of uh, opportunities. The, the, the illegal drug market is too um, it's too lucrative for some poor people to get involved, to, to, to pass up on. If everybody had jobs and money, um, crime would be greatly reduced. So we need to get people to respond to positive reinforcement and not wait for the police to have to negatively reinforce people and getting people to be afraid of the Gestapo.
Thank you. Uh, Bill Galvin, if you'd please respond to the question?
Sure, thank you. If, if you were to look at the uh, statistics that the chief, uh, the current chief and the previous chief have been putting out every month, you would see that not all violent crime is on the rise. In fact, a lot of it has been declining steadily over the last several years. So obviously, uh, what we're more concerned about right here and what this question is based on is the amount of shots fired calls. If you look at the data that's involved with that, most of these shootings involve groups of individuals that know each other. They have grudges with each other and they're hunting each other down and trying to create uh, uh, trauma in the areas where these individuals live. Could the department uh, do more? I think so. I think uh, our community police organization has been reducing staffing due to budget cuts. Um, we've had uh, um, uh, officers that uh, in the tactical division are running short right now because uh, staffing shortages. Um, you know, we could beef that up. We could do more work in our community. We've done a lot of work in the community. Working with minority groups and that to, to build bridges so that we can head off some of these things before they happen or when they do happen, so we can solve them relatively quickly before someone does get hurt. Um, but the, the study, I'm waiting to see what happens with that study that the chief is having conducted. And then we'll make some decisions going forward from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew Gerlach, if you'd please respond?
I definitely agree. I think uh, the shots fired is, is probably the main reason for this cause, what we've been hearing so much about the, the last few months. Um, I think a lot of it has to do, I went to the gun violence uh, meeting at the museum and you, the police chief said um, that a lot of it comes down to lack of respect and people um, feeling like they're not being heard. And so I think getting the community involved and, and making sure that the community has a safe outlet to, to report things that they're suspicious of or that they're worried about um, would help. And I think again, we do have to support our local police department too and make sure that they do have the resources to, to work with different individuals and bridge gaps and um, build those bridges with other communities or other people in the community that um, tend to be more susceptible to those type of incidents, so. Bridging the gap, I think, would be the answer.
Okay, thank you. Natalie Huffman, if you could please respond?
Uh, thank you. Yeah, so um, thank you, uh, Bill for sharing uh, the reports that have been coming up. Uh, because I think that kind of clears up um, some questions that I think that um, a lot of folks have had around the issue of violence. Um, I think that the way that the police um, have been reacting to the violent crime issue has been appropriate. However, there is a difference between pro, like proactive and reactive, like preventative measures versus reactive measures as far as when it comes to preventing crime. You can either work on things to prevent it before it happens or you can react to it after it happens. Um, I think that a lot of crime comes from people lacking in resources and also like someone else had mentioned um, issues that, you know, start in the home, like dealing with relationship problems. Like, you know, it's not necessarily um, something, it's not always something that the police can do something to prevent. So I think being able to work hand in hand with also being able to invest in communities to provide the resources that um, folks need to be able to prevent things, to prevent violence from happening in the future is also an important step that we need to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Hutchinson, if you could please respond?
Thank you. Um, I agree with Natalie with what she just said. And I also agree with Michael Shay, uh, my opponent in District Two with when we should study the issue then based on facts, come up with a solution. Um, our Our police department is the largest budget item we have as a city, and we should be able to call on the police department and come up with plans and studies that address these issues. And so I think getting to the problems and addressing those specifically is a way to go with a clear vision in mind with, with regard to these shootings and associated violence. Thank you.
You. Cassidy McGowan, if you could please respond.
Thank you. So this issue is near and dear to all of us. We all enjoy and appreciate and love calling Green Bay home, but none of us should feel unsafe. There's not one person who calls Northeast Wisconsin or Green Bay home. They should feel unsafe. We need to first encourage and work closely with our police. We need to fill the vacancies that exist right now in our police department. Possibly look at that $100,000 for the rebranding effort and give $10,000 sign-on bonus for police officers to attract them to the profession. Just this past weekend, The Wall Street Journal had an article titled or titled Police Departments Are Understaffed. They quoted John LaValle, a former police officer of Green Bay, who said on patrol he regularly was called derogatory things. I'm not going to talk about what the article called him. And he lost his mental capacity to handle violence and constant negativity. So assign on bonus, fill the vacancies, and also have a task force to get the guns off the streets. There was a 25% increase in shootings in 2021 as compared to 2020, and that's unacceptable. So if we can do that, work closely with our community. And unfortunately, who are creating these violent crimes are young adolescent males. I think we need to do a better opportunity of encouraging them to be part of our society, giving them opportunities, job training, and explain thoroughly in our school system the reasons why to be a law-abiding citizen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our fifth question, we will start with Michael Shay, and the question is, due to the continued COVID pandemic, some companies have required their employees to be vaccinated. Even more companies require their employees to wear masks. How do you feel about this? And how should the city council decide what policies to follow in the city of Green Bay buildings? Michael?
Thank you. I am now and always have been and always will be completely against mandates. I am not against masking. I'm not against vaccination. I am against mandates of such. For example, I just came back from a trade show last week that was in a state that has mask mandates. They aren't followed. People in the local community and local businesses are irritated because of the mandate, but there's plenty of people wearing masks, plenty of people getting vaccinations. This needs to be something that is addressed on a personal level for personal people. If masks and vaccinations are important, and I'm not saying they're not, you need to convince people that they are. You don't need to force people to get them done and to do those things. I'm against the mandate. I'm for education. I would rather spend time and effort educating people what they need to know so that they understand what needs to happen than using government power to mandate them to wear a mask or get a vaccination or something like that. I'm, I'm all for spending the time and resources to get information into people's hands so that they know how important a vaccine is or what effects a mask would have or things like that. But absolutely against any mandate of either of those.
Thank you. Douglas Yates, if you please take.
Do you have a question?
Certainly. Due to the continued COVID pandemic, some companies have required their employees to be vaccinated. Even more companies require their employees to wear masks. How do you feel about this? And how should the city council decide which policies to follow in the city of Green Bay buildings?
Oh, for a private company, I don't have any feelings about what they want to do. That's their business. They decide for them. That's what, that's for them. That's what they should do. As for Green Bay City Buildings, we already have a measured standard that we need to adhere to. I believe, oh, what is it? World Health Organization? And drawing a blank on another one, but they have, they have guidelines that you should follow. That's where you should follow. I don't have an issue against masking. I don't think it should be mandated. I don't have an issue against vaccines. I don't think it should be mandated. I am 100% against all mandates in any capacity. We as individuals should be able to make our own choice with the best information available. If you can't read it yourself and clearly understand it, you should not have to be forced to take it. End of story. I don't have any feelings towards people that want to have mask mandates or vaccine mandates in their own business. You can simply choose not to go to them businesses or partake in their businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Boucher, if you could please respond.
I would, I would listen to the health experts. If somebody's paid to be a health expert, they've been educated to be a health expert, and they say, no shoes, no service, you believe them. They tell hockey players to wear a helmet, you wear a helmet. And if they're in a city and they say you need mask, I'm just going to assume they know what they're doing because that's what they're paid to do. So I'm not going to try to usurp the authority of a medical professional or many medical professionals. That's where I stand.
Okay, thank you. Bill Galvin, if you'd please respond to the question.
Sure. I, I think at this point, if a company requires their employees to cut their hair, get a vaccine, wear a seatbelt, wear a mask, get tested, that's, that's up to that company. It's their company. The people can choose whether they want to work for them or not. As to how they treat their customers, same thing. Well, the city of Green Bay is a mask mandate for people that are not vaccinated. And for those that are, it's not required inside city buildings. Previously, earlier, when there was a lot of unknown about the this pandemic and how it was affecting people, the city did institute a mask mandate with really very lenient consequences for those that didn't follow it. Now, I would argue with anyone that says you should be allowed to make your own decision anytime. What if the mortality rate was 50%? Would, you know, at what point do you say getting a vaccine and wearing a mask would be necessary? So it's, 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 it's an ongoing issue. I think we're going to be learning more and more about this pandemic as time goes on and find out that we've made a lot of mistakes, but I think we've also done some good things along the way. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew Gerlach, if you could please respond.
Yeah, I think I'm against mandating anything as well, and I do believe that if you own a business, you should be able to make your own rules up as you go as far as masking or not masking, unvaccinated, vaccinated. I don't think we should get involved with that. We should leave that on the business owner. But I also think that education, obviously, is probably the most effective weapon. Making sure that we're telling as many people as possible to wash their hands, wear a mask if they don't feel well, different things like that. I mean, I don't think it should be mandated, but I think as individuals, we all need to accept some responsibility for our own actions, and we need to do what we can to protect the other community other than the community. I worked with a lot of older clients, and I did get the vaccination, but I did it for their protection, not because I wanted to, but I wanted to protect them. And I think if we all take that same stance and we just care about other people, we'll get through this a lot easier. That's my personal stance on it.
Thank you. Natalie Huffman, if you'd please respond.
Thank you. Yeah, so I've heard a few people talk about, you know, individual responsibility and that we should be leaving that up to other folks, but I think with that conversation, what's becoming lost is that the fact that this isn't a pandemic that just affects us as a city, as a state, or even a country. This is a global pandemic, and compared to other countries, we are probably one of the only places that has not required people to be wearing masks and getting vaccines. However, with the messaging that the World Health Organization has been putting out, it has been inconsistent from the beginning, which I can completely understand where people would have lost faith and have grown distrustful of the science, despite the fact that those people have been committing their entire careers to doing the research and to finding out all this information for us. So I would say that if we would move forward with a mandate, which I would be in favor of, we need to make sure that there is education that is sound and that is consistent, that is going around, so people can understand the importance of masks and vaccines, excuse me, because both of those things are incredibly important. And I think that the more people realize that, yes, these are important with more consistent messaging, they would be more apt to wanting to partake in that. And maybe at that point, a mandate wouldn't be necessary, but right now there are just not enough people participating in those safety precautions to curb the spread of this pandemic. So, thank you.
Thank you. Jim Hutchinson, if you'd please respond.
Thank you. I really, really want this pandemic to end, and I think it's been proven that vaccines and wearing masks are effective. It's not a question, really. They're effective. It, it's a tool to use. I understand the, the desire to have personal freedom to choose, but in actuality, people's personal freedoms have actually killed people in this, in this, during this timeframe. And not just 10,000, but hundreds of thousands of people have died. I don't think we've comprehended this, where we're at right now. And the fact that nurses and doctors are begging people to get vaccinated. Okay, this is, I can't believe we're living now when they actually have to beg people to get vaccinated. It kind of almost makes me sick because they're, they're working for us. They're helping people live, and they're begging us. So I would back the need to require vaccinations wholeheartedly. Now, once we get it under control and once it's ending, then we can go back to the business of personal freedom. But until that time, no. Thank you.
Thank you. Cassidy McGowan, if you could please respond.
Thank you very much. It says in our preamble of the Constitution that to promote the general welfare and secure the blessings of liberty, that is the role of our government. So the government really has to be careful not overreach on this topic. Therefore, I would oppose a mask mandate. I would just oppose that. And I understand many people in District Two are either in favor or oppose mask mandates. These are all fine, great people that I've meet over the past three weekends of going door to door. These are wonderful people, and I think like, like Michael said, you know, we need to work on education. We can't disparage these people. We need to educate them on the merits of wearing a mask and getting vaccinated, but at the end of the day, you have life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, and your liberty to not get vaccinated, the government should not mandate a vaccine nor a mask mandate. So, you know, I'm not going to die on that hill, though. You know, if it keeps my children in school or if it keeps school doors open, I would be in favor of a, you know, I, I would be not opposed to a mask mandate in a school if that's what the administration decides. And I think our local leaders like myself need to be more vocal about keeping our schools open. And that's why, I know it's not a city issue, that is why it's on my door hanger, and it is near and dear to, to my heart, keeping schools open. So, thank you.
Thank you. Aaron Olbruck, if you could respond to the question.
First, I'd like to thank Jim for pulling out all the stops and kind of saying what needs to be said. Absolutely. Nobody likes the word mandate because nobody likes to be told what to do. Personal liberty is a big thing in this country. However, we've kind of generally agreed that your personal liberty ends when you influence somebody else's, and living is a personal liberty. So if your actions are curtailing that, they need to be stopped. A mask mandate, definitely not a big deal. I definitely see where private business has the right to decide what they do inside their doors, but outside of that, the mask prevents you from transmitting the disease, not from getting the disease. If it were the other way around, I wouldn't see the need for it, but it's stopping you from infringing on someone else's liberty. As far as vaccine goes, I absolutely think everybody should get the vaccine. I got mine through the VA when it first came out. Of course, with military, I got many that probably weren't quite tested, and 12 years later, I'm more or less okay. So I trust the science, and I think community leaders and state leaders should all lead the way in encouraging that trust. Thank you.
Thank you. For our sixth question, we'll start with Douglas Yates, and the question is, what are your thoughts on the Equal Rights Ordinance recently passed by city council? Douglas?
Thank you. Equal rights are important for everybody. Rights are given to us by our Creator, right? So why shouldn't everybody have them? I don't think we need to take actual steps like that to say it again and again, but they did. I don't have any problem with it.
Okay. Paul Boucher, if you'd please respond.
This is the, this is the first I'm hearing about it. I don't know what it entails at all. If you want to enlighten me, that'd be great. I don't know anything.
Okay, thank you. Bill Galvin, if you'd please respond.
Sure, thank you. The Equal Rights Ordinance follows the state and federal guidelines and adds to it to a certain extent. Any complaints made to it are going to be investigated and referred to a state or federal jurisdiction. If it's not covered by state or federal, then the city can look at prosecuting it if they feel it's prosecutable. I think everyone in America has a right to their freedom and to be treated equally as everyone else. That hasn't always happened here. It's unfortunate. It still occurs, and I think we're working towards a better America, but we have to continue to work at it, and I think this ordinance helps us do that. So I'm totally in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew Gerlach?
I'm also in favor of it. I think it's a good step forward. Everyone does deserve the same amount of respect, no matter what sexual orientation, gender, male, female, race, color, creed, whatever. So I am definitely for it, and I think it's a great step forward.
Thank you. Natalie Huffman?
I just want to say thank you to Bill again for clarifying what is also news to me as well, like Paul stated. I wasn't aware that that was just passed, but I am completely in favor of it, especially considering as much as some people like, as far as what I've heard from, like, you know, general opinion, a lot of people think that, like, you know, some of the issues surrounding like racism and homophobia have, like, you know, dissolved because, like, you know, people are talking about these issues more and more, and we have seen advancements for, like, people of color, the black community, for the LGBTQ community in making strides forward. However, there is still a long ways to go. These issues are still very prevalent in our society. I don't know what those exact numbers look like in Green Bay. However, I do, yes, again, I think that is something that we can continue to work on because there is still work to do. So as far as what Green Bay has put forward, I am completely in support of that.
Thank you. Jim Hutchinson, if you'd please take the question.
Sure, thank you. Totally in favor of equal rights. I'm glad that the city followed through with this and adopted it, and it was a good thing. Thank you.
Okay. Cassidy McGowan, please take the question.
Okay, thank you. Is my mute tone? No, it's not. Okay, so I'm all for the Equal Rights Ordinance. You know, anything that prohibits discrimination in housing, employment, and public spaces based on race, sexual orientation, or gender is a good thing. Everybody has dignity. Everybody's been created in the image of God, so I believe that everybody has an inherent equal right to all the freedoms that we enjoy in this great city, state, and country. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Aaron Olbruck, if you'd please take the question.
As we're all here running to represent our constituents to the government, the government was founded on the principles of the Constitution. All people are created equal, and I'm paraphrasing, of course, to update that. And ultimately, people will make up a community. So if we give the city a tool to help forward that idea when state and federal laws don't quite cover it, then absolutely, we should do as much as we need to to make that happen.
Thank you. Michael Shay, if you'd please take the question.
Absolutely, equal rights are important. Every single person on this planet should be equal, treated equally under the eyes of the law. As far as this specific city ordinance, I'm not sure that I would have voted for this specific ordinance because I don't feel that it defines certain things the way it should. It offers thousand dollar fines for violating it without offering specific definitions to specific terms used in it. I think that, uh, the law needs to be, personally, I think it needs to be rewritten to be more expansive on what the definitions of certain terms they're using are and how they would be applied. It's very similar to, uh, a few of the people who voted against it had the same issues with it. Not that equal rights aren't important, just that when you're dealing with an actual law to address something that's going to have a one thousand dollar fine associated to it, you better make sure that you have the definitions and the way that law is going to be applied down pat before it's passed.
Thank you. Um, I think we have time for one more question and before we start our, our closing comments. And the question is, and we'll start with you, Paul. What is more important for a city right now? Building new homes and commercial spaces? Or rehabbing, expanding, and better utilizing our existing homes and storefronts? Paul?
Oh, definitely, we need to, um, uh, expand to new homes. The older homes are, they have, uh, you know, some have lead pipes, some have, um, different issues. You know, uh, trying to fix things that are broken, it's, 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 uh, it's kind of a wasted effort a lot of times. But we should plan out in advance because these, these houses we built are gonna be around for over a hundred years. So we really need to, um, you know, watch our imagery, what do we wanna do, what do we wanna be? What do the youth want? What direction is the city going? But definitely I'm for building new. A lot of the, the old stuff we're saving is, uh, antiquated and is, and some of it is not necessarily racist, but slightly race, has racial biases to it. So I'm all for building new.
Thank you. Uh, Bill Galvin, would you please take the question?
Sure, thank you. And actually, I, I don't think there's, uh, a, a good answer where you pit one against the other. I would prefer to see the, uh, older sections of the town rehab, and put to use as residences and businesses. Bring more people in to live there, more businesses, uh, raise the, uh, the, the value of that property. And at the same time, uh, it doesn't hurt to expand the city and let it grow. Uh, we have space for roughly sixty, thirty-six thousand more people to live in, in the community. But we have to be careful. Part of the problem the city has with its, uh, road infrastructures, we have over four hundred and fifty miles of roadway. And when you have, uh, subdivisions that are large with large lots in that, you're adding a lot more cost to the maintenance and the care of those, uh, those, that infrastructure. So I, I think it has to be smart development, uh, both growing the city and at the same time, smart development, rehabbing, and reusing, um, what we already have in place and getting more use out of it. Thank you.
Yes. Andrew Gurlek, if you could please respond?
Yeah, I think we should, uh, rehab existing structures and make them more compatible with today's situation. Uh, I do also think that, um, when we're, when we're doing this type of stuff, we should also consider building out. Uh, but instead of building out, maybe building up so that we can reduce our carbon footprint. Uh, we all want the city to grow, but we don't necessarily want to increase our carbon footprint either. So I think, uh, building up and rehabbing, uh, combined joint venture would be a great solution for that.
Thank you. Natalie Huffman, if you'd please respond?
Yeah, thank you. I think the past two, uh, people who have spoken have made really good points about, um, not being able to pit one against the other and reducing carbon footprint. Um, I think there is a value to both, um, you know, maintaining and making better what we already have as well as being able to expand for the future. Um, if I had to put one against the other, um, I would probably give the edge to, um, reworking with what we already have. Um, because I mean, there is a lot of like beautiful architecture and a lot of like, you know, um, things that people really enjoy, like, you know, landmarks, those types of things that are really important to the city, um, as a whole, things that have existed here for a while that we can already work with. Like, if we already have it, why not make it better before we invest in something that's completely new? Um, and I do really, um, uh, stand with the sentiment that like, yeah, as, um, because a lot of the architecture in the city is old, like, you know, there's lead pipes, there's things that are dangerous. We can still use those spaces, but they need to be updated and they can also be updated in a greener, cleaner way with better energy and better cleaner infrastructure. So I think by investing in, um, maintaining and reworking, um, what we already have, um, that is what I would go for. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Hutchinson, if you'd please respond?
Sure. Uh, being from District Two, uh, we have a lot of open space on the far east side that could use new homes. So there's that aspect. There's also rebuilding of existing structures. My house is getting thirty years old and I built it. It's, uh, it's a dual function, but here's one thing that we need to not overlook. When we build a new house in a farm field, we're adding surface water runoff. And so we have to make sure the development is in the same pace as our utilities. One thing that's being stressed is our surface water runoff, especially on the east side. And we have to take a very close look when we build things new and when we retrofit things that we're taking into account the new rainfall intensities and durations and we can handle that new water. And if we can't, we're gonna have to build structures to do that because we just can't take the flooding, as someone already mentioned, because it's not gonna get any less in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Cassidy McGowan, if you could please respond?
Okay, thank you. Um, I believe, like we all do, that we need to keep Green Bay competitive and desirable. One way to do that would be to expand and build and increase available housing. Home prices are way up right now and, uh, because of that, the lack of houses on the market. Um, I was talking to a local real estate agent, uh, recently and this past fall, end of summer into the fall, was the lowest inventory of housing of, uh, houses on the market in the last twenty years. Um, in the east side, the far east side, District Two has a lot of opportunity, um, to zone residential areas, to stabilize taxes. Um, we can also rework what we have here, like the East Town Mall, um, for example. It would be great to use existing buildings, but again, to keep Green Bay, um, competitive and desirable, we need to, um, look at economic growth and provide more, uh, housing opportunities for people who are attracted to our area.
Aaron Obruck, if you'd please respond?
Um, I would say that, uh, the issues mentioned with expansion, uh, sort of drive the answer here. Uh, between the runoff and the increased demand on infrastructure, continuing to just expand outward and outward was gonna incur costs that we're either gonna push down the road or, uh, just never be able to address properly, uh, including flooding and the bad roads have been mentioned several times in this discussion. And for that answer, I would say we need to work on rehabbing properties, not necessarily the buildings themselves, but perhaps institute more mixed use when we get closer to downtown and in the, uh, sort of the more commercial adjacent neighborhoods. And then, uh, redesign some of the lots so that they, and provide exemptions for ideas like row houses. You know, I think the, I've seen the trend go towards smaller, smaller domiciles since people don't wanna spend as much time in them, especially after this COVID pandemic hopefully ends at some point. And moving forward from there would allow us to really reshape the city into something that comes out ahead of us, stronger versus reactive. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Shea, if you'd please respond?
This is an issue that may not have a one size fits all, so I wouldn't pit one against the other either. Uh, in District Two, we are a fairly newer community. Older than my house and if I lived downtown, I wouldn't be able to say that. District Two has room to expand. There's, um, plenty of space. If you look at a downtown neighborhood, there's not plenty of space to expand. That's where you need to focus on rebuilding and modernizing and using the existing structures. District Two specifically, we're an expanding neighborhood. We're an expanding area. Downtown's more of a redevelopment area. We can't have a one size fits all for the entire city. That's why we have different districts and different alders focused on those districts as well as the city overall. So there is no one against the other. We have to be able to do both and we have to be able to do it effectively and address the issues that both of those, um, building and expanding versus, uh, renovating will have. They're gonna have separate issues. We're gonna have to deal with it. We can't pick one or the other. We're just gonna have to face these things and deal with them.
Thank you. Uh, Douglas Yates, if you please respond?
This is another one of them answers where you can't get in depth on it in a minute thirty, but you give it your best. Um, you gotta incorporate both no matter what you do because you're gonna have, just like in District Four, we are an older honed area and we have a lot more lower income areas in District Four. And if you wanna expand it, you're gonna have to retrofit almost every building that we have. My house alone is over a hundred years old. I had a choice between buying new or buying the one I have. I bought the one I have because I loved it. A lot of people are gonna feel that way, but yet a lot of people are gonna wanna build new. Same thing when you come to commercial industry, you're gonna wanna supply and demand. First, you need to see if the supply is there. First, you need to see if the demand is there, then you need to bring the supply. If the demand is there, well, then you gotta build. Other than that, there's no solid one answer for this issue. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, that ends our questions and so it is time now for our closing statements. We will begin with Bill Galvin. Bill, if you would offer your two-minute closing statement?
Sure, thank you. I believe I have, over the last six years, I have worked hard to earn the respect and trust of my constituents. I know, uh, we don't always agree with each other, but I, I'm always willing to listen and to discuss with them and, and in fact, there are several of them that I know we don't always agree with each other, but they're always willing to call me back, to discuss things with me and find common ground. I listen and I learn from everybody I have contact with. Everyone has a story and I'm there to listen to that and learn from it. And I think it has helped shape me, uh, as an older person for this community. I've always been an advocate for the residents of this community and I believe in transparency, openness, and ethics, and I think I provided that, uh, during my last six years. I work with other alders. I work with the mayor and his staff. Uh, again, I don't always agree with all of them and we have some pretty, uh, pretty good discussions from time to time. But I think all of us here, all the alders, uh, the mayor, his staff, I think all the people that are running, uh, that are here today, we care about this community and we want it to be a better community, um, going on into the future and to continue to improve. With that said, I've had people accuse me of being the, the mayor's lapdog and, and I kinda laugh at that because the last mayor was considered conservative. The current mayor is considered to be a liberal and so I think it's kinda shows that I, I, I tend to run with what's best for our community. Um, when I, when I make my decisions by the fact that I've been accused of coddling up the both sides of that coin. So I appreciate the time that you've given us here and, uh, I wish everyone the best of luck going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew Gurlek, if you'd please offer your closing statement?
Yeah, thank you for, uh, putting this together. I think this is, uh, pretty fantastic. I too think we need to work together and we need to be the voice for all of our constituents. Uh, we're not always gonna see eye to eye, but I think we all are on the same page that we do want a better community and I think that, uh, if all of us are to work together, we can definitely help create a better community. And I think that starts with listening to the people, what they want, what direction they want us to go. Creating open dialect with the neighborhoods and trying to get more people to step up and um, run for office, I think is excellent because it's, it just shows how, how, how much of our commu- our community actually really does care. And I think opening the dialogue with your neighbors and, uh, communicating with them and treating them as if they were your family, uh, will go a long way in building a better community and making it more more fun to enjoy or, or more, yeah, more peaceful. So yeah, that's what I got. Thank you again.
Thank you. Natalie Huffman, if you'd please offer your closing statement?
Yeah, um, I just wanna say thank you again to the League of Women's Voters for hosting this forum. I think it's really important for all of our voters to get a better idea of, um, what are the values of our, of, of the, um, candidates, excuse me. And, um, it was really awesome, like, from my perspective as well, to hear, um, from all of you what you guys thought about, um, all of these questions. I think, uh, the wisdom and the experiences that, um, all of us, um, bring to the table are really valuable in, um, just our democratic process. Like, you know, this isn't about just each of us individually. This is about building a better community. And, uh, that's what I want to do. Like, if I am elected, I just, my biggest thing is that I want to contribute positively to this community. And I think by building community, by better connecting with, not, not only each other here on the city council, but by connecting with our constituents and, you know, gaining their perspectives as well. Um, that is the best thing that we can do, do to preserve democracy and to be able to work together to, um, better this community. Yeah, that's pretty, pretty much it. Uh, thank you guys, um, everyone for being here tonight and for sharing your perspectives. And yeah, I look forward to, um, working with y'all in the future and talking with you and hearing more about everything that's going on.
Thank you. Uh, Jim Hutchinson, if you'd please offer your closing statement?
Sure, thanks. Um, yeah, I'd also like to thank everyone who participated in this, uh, forum. My wife and I, i- it's funny, over the years, when we're discussing local politics and views that, that, that our alders have and if we agree or disagree, inevitably, my wife will say, hey, uh, we owe them a debt. Even if it's someone we disagree with, we owe them a debt because they're doing a hard job. And I'm beginning to understand what Alder Gavin said about this being a difficult job. I've only been trying to do this for a couple weeks now and it's, it's, uh, it's something else. Running for the local office can be a thankless job, but over the last week or so, I've been thanked by people who didn't know who I was just for the fact I was running. And I'd like to thank, send that thank you to everyone else here. Thanks for running. Because we gotta, like people say, there's power when people work together. Uh, one quick note again, I'm gonna say it again, the Fox River is going to be a big selling point of Green Bay. It's not just because I worked on it for twenty-plus years and, and cleaned it up a little bit. I think it's really gonna be a shining gem, uh, in the future and we, we should start thinking in terms of getting on that water and having fun. And my vision for Green Bay is to continue to build the city. I think we're at a point now, we weren't at this point ten years ago in our common council. Our common council wasn't so geared. It was something different. It's in a different, better place right now. And I, I would love to see Green Bay grow and become a place of art and music and history and friendliness. So when people go up to Door County, they say, oh, we gotta stop off at Green Bay. Thank you.
Thank you. Cassidy McGowan, if you'd please offer your closing statement?
Okay, I just wanna really quickly say thank you to everybody involved. The future is bright based on everything that I've heard this evening. As I said at the beginning, I think my service will be beneficial to the community of Green Bay, especially District Two. I pledge to be accessible, to work hard on district concerns. In this position in particular, I need to immerse myself in the community like I've been doing the past three weeks and really get to know our community members and the folks that have retired, work, and raised families in District Two. I pledge to be a good listener and get things done to improve Green Bay for the families, for all families' future, like safe neighborhoods. My wife and I and my three children love Green Bay. We will continue to love Green Bay. There's much work to be done to maintain and improve our city as a great place to live and work. And I look forward to meeting everybody in District Two, going door to door and getting the chance to know me better, share your views with me, ask me questions. We're gonna make good things happen when we work together. Um, and I also, um, ask that if somebody in District Two has a question or a concern or an issue they'd like to talk about, please email at cassidy.r.mgawain@gmail.com. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Aaron Obruck, if you'd please offer your closing statement?
Uh, first off, thanks to the Women's League of Voters for putting this on. I know now with COVID, there's I know now with COVID, there's a lot of hard times getting the message out there, and you guys are assisting with that greatly. I think as we go forward, you know, we looked at this whole forum. There was nuanced opinions, but generally, we all want what's best for Green Bay. And as a community, I think we need to come together and decide what that is and make it happen. Whether it's the exciting prospect of the riverfront, though, Jim, I would disagree with you and say that people need to talk about going to Door County when they come here. But in to build that community, we have to have buy-in. We have to give everybody that feeling as, as leaders that this is our community, not all of us just in this forum, but our neighbors, our neighbors' neighbors, the next block over, District Two, District, all of, you know, it, it's not just one group of people. And going forward from there, tonight kind of shows me that we're not as far away from that as I originally thought. So if anything, this has actually given me more hope and resolve, and I want to thank all of you for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Shea, if you'd please offer your closing statement.
Where's Mom at?
Thank you. Thank you, the League of Women Voters, for putting this on. This is fantastic. I started my adult life, so to speak, as a janitor, and I worked my way into turning a hobby into a career. I got my degree in network security as an adult. And then I, again, turned a hobby into a career and opened my own business ten years ago, and I, I think that the city needs a janitor that knows how to work through problems and understands that there are not roadblocks. We've heard it here tonight, and I'm sorry to pick on anybody, but our city council, many of us here have said certain things that we wanted to do, and we even heard from a city council member tonight that, oh, Green Bay's not allowed to do that. That's not the way it works. We can't use funds for that. We can't do this. Those are roadblocks. The city government needs to take down roadblocks. We need to find creative solutions to get things done. We need to proactively be looking at issues so that they don't become problems, let alone have the city government creating problems themselves. You know, there's enough in the city that we have to worry about without creating problems. Be it the roads, of course, and the safety of our community. I've dedicated the last ten years to the safety of this community. My entire career, my entire job right now, is dedicated to the personal safety of this community, and I'm going to continue doing that when I'm on the council knocking down roadblocks. Thank you.
Thank you. Douglas Yates, if you'd please offer your closing statement.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters. I appreciate you giving us the opportunity to discuss our issues with the community. And I'd like to wish everybody in the race good luck. I know that there are going to be one winner. I hope it's the best one for your community. As you can tell from this forum, I can't tell you who I'd vote for in any other district than my own because a minute thirty just isn't enough time to get the answers and the nuances of every situation, but I hope you got a good glimpse of which we were thinking and which we were going. I seem to be the oddball out in this entire group. I think the government should spend less time in our lives, and we should decide more of it. Six years I lived in my district, I've not once heard from my current alderman. I'm not trying to run him down or knock him down for that. I just have heard from him. Maybe because I didn't know where to go or what to do. The League of Women Voters have given us a good opportunity to find those things out. Ah, one of the big things that I'm going to stick with on is our roads and our infrastructure. We need to get it done. I know our, our one elder, Galvin, had talked about it earlier. Everybody wants it, but nobody wants to pay for it, but that's just not true. We have had a general three-percent tax across the board for the last three, four years. We're paying for it. We need to know where it's going. I don't know where it's going, and that's a problem. Our roads need to be fixed, and I want to be the one to do it. I can't promise you anything. There's eleven other people that you have to dispute and agree with in order to get something done. But I hope you consider me. Look for me on Facebook at Yates for Alderman, and you can always email me, yeatsforalderman@gmail.com. Thank you for your time.
Paul Boucher, if you'd please offer your closing comment.
Yeah, I have a vision for the community, and I've talked to a lot of youth, talked to college students, and we really need to help prepare for their future because a lot of us will be around to see a lot of the things that we're going to implement. We need more diversity, and I think if we built a university downtown, dedicated diversity would really help the city. Also, going green, UPGB is the original Eco University. We could build an indoor parking ramp downtown which would attract people, skywalks downtown to make the downtown more accessible year-round. Building a renewable energy power plant, perhaps like a bridge across Lake Michigan that would have solar and wind energy would make Green Bay more accessible to the world, because right now, you have to go to Chicago from the east coast if you want to come to Green Bay. And if you bring, if you raise the water, you, you, you raise all the boats. Was that you raise, you raise the water level, you raise all the boats? We're fighting over nickels and dimes on a lot of these projects, and we really could make a lot of money that would pay for all these projects. So I'd like to see things like tunnels under the river, a monk-style arch that would draw people into the community. And people want to build dikes and berms and these water absorption things. It's like, well, if you just built a tunnel from Green Bay to to Kiwanee, that would solve all those problems. It would, it would reduce the number of quarries. Quarries are a big problem. There's probably holes all over town. You could run the, the water, the water we get from Kiwanee, you could run the water pipeline through there. You've got fish hatcheries in the tunnel. You could have, you could have hydroponic farming in the, in the tunnel. There's all kinds of things you could do. We really need to open our mind and expand our view. Thank you to the League of Women Voters and all who listen.
Thank you. And this ends our forum, and I'd like to extend a sincere thank you to District Two candidates, Jim Hutchinson, Cassidy McGowan, and Michael Shea. District Four candidates, William Galvin, Douglas Yates, and Natalie Huffman. And District Six candidates, Andrew Gurlek, Aaron Obruck, and Paul Boucher for participating in this virtual forum and sharing your positions and perspectives. And thank you to our audience participating virtually and for submitting your thoughtful questions. We'd like to extend a sincere appreciation to League Board Member Karen Schley for coordinating this forum and League Member Steve Harrell for the technical work to set up and record the forum, Jane Benson for reviewing the questions, and Linda Bartlett, our president, for serving as our timekeeper. As a reminder, the recording of the forum is available on the League of Women Voters Greater Green Bay Facebook page and website. Please remember to vote by absentee or in-person at the polls on Tuesday, February fifteenth. Early in-person voting starts on Tuesday, February first. This ends the Brown County Board, this ends the Green Bay City Council Forum brought to you by the League of Women Voters of Greater Green Bay. Thank you very much and have a very good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care, everyone.
Thank you.
Bye, everybody.
Bye.